I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the mayor and council, October 11, 2017, 8:00 PM. Madam Clerk, if you could do a roll call, please?
Mayor Kranjak.
President.
Councilperson Zaversa.
Here.
E. Park.
Here.
O.
Here.
McMorro.
Here.
M. Park.
Yes.
Wu.
Here.
Borough Attorney.
Present.
Superintendent of DPW.
Yes.
Borough Administrator.
Yes.
Municipal Clerk. Everyone's present and the mayor is participating via telephone.
If we can all stand for a flag, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as a whole. If we can all remain standing for a moment and just have a moment of silence for the tragedy in Las Vegas that took place. Madam Clerk, if you could read the Open Public Meetings Act.
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk. And also, Council President, I want to report that for those that weren't in caucus, the governing body agreed to add two additional resolutions to the agenda, which is 188 and 189. The Borough Attorney will provide additional information, but a summary is that two appointments are being made to the Recreation Advisory Board.
Okay. Councilwoman, now, do you have any questions about that before we get there?
About the appointments?
The additions of the 188 and 189.
So, there are two resolutions and two appointments?
Yes.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Marco Sango is one physician and Lynn Wexler is the other physician. We had two resignations. One was Viviana Rosati and the other was Beatrice Massius.
Okay.
And they will be filling their unexpired terms.
Madam Clerk, I believe there was another item entered as well under all business. Councilwoman Park, question?
Oh, for the discussion on the report from the Borough Engineer on Lighting. That has been added to the agenda and we will be discussing that under all business.
Okay. Thank you.
Ready field.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could read the minutes off that we're going to be voting on.
First minutes, caucus, and regular minutes of September 20 -- I'm sorry, September 13, 2017. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Yes.
E. Park.
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro.
Yes.
M. Park.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
Special Meeting of June 12, 2017. I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Councilperson Zaversa.
Yes.
E. Park.
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro.
Yes.
M. Park.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
We're going to be voting on closed session minutes from 2016 and I need to remind you that if you recuse during closed session, so please recuse, and if you weren't present in 2016, please indicate as well. I need a motion for May 11, 2016, closed session minutes.
Discussion?
Yes, Councilman.
Just a point, though. If you have a change to closed session, unless it is sort of uninvolved, we would have to have a closed session to discuss your change. Okay?
Okay. So, we're not voting on March 28?
Mark, microphone, please? It's not picking up. Thank you.
We're not voting on March 28? Is that correct? Because that was in the original package.
The mayor took that off for next month's meeting?
Okay. That was -- that's one I had a question on, so.
Okay. Do we know why he took it off? I do not believe so.
But since it's closed session.
He's on the phone.
Yeah, but you can't discuss subject matter of closed session in public, so you can email the Borough Attorney about your question or the mayor, but anything having to do with closed session, you have to go with closed session to discuss.
Let me correct that. If everyone's been provided with a copy and the communication regarding changes to that should go to the Borough Clerk or to the Borough Administrator. It doesn't automatically come to me for review. If you want to pick up the phone and call me, I have no problem, but if you have an issue on a particular set of closed session minutes, it should really be addressed initially to, I believe, the Borough Clerk.
Correct.
And if that isn't successful, then to the Borough Administrator, not to the attorney. Unless it's strictly a legal issue, like a recusal issue, then you might want to call me.
Okay.
Okay?
Let me just add that I felt that there was something incorrect in the special meeting minutes without getting into the substance of it now, and we'll address it in November.
Okay. The mayor indicated that he felt there were some issues with the March 28 meeting and we will just put those meeting minutes on the agenda for the next meeting, I believe. So, mayor, is that what you said?
That's right.
Yes.
Okay.
And respectfully, I disagree, since I'm the one that keeps the minutes.
Okay.
I do disagree with the mayor's decision to pull the minutes.
Okay.
No, I think, Madam Clerk, that you're out of line. Let me say that publicly.
Okay.
Okay. Can we move the voting of that?
Sure.
May 11.
May 11.
Can I ask you a private lady a question?
On which one?
Well, it kind of has to do with like two of them.
Sure. Can we just take a minute, please? Sure.
I appreciate that.
Point of order.
Oh.
You would have to close the meeting to go off and talk.
I do that. I just respectfully disagree. Councilman, would you like to consult with Borough Attorney on a legal issue with respect to a minute?
Exactly.
Okay. If this will take a minute, it's not inappropriate. It doesn't need to close the main meeting. You're not going to keep me in here all night, are you? There's no microphone in here, right?
No. Okay. Sorry, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
It's fine. Yeah.
Okay, we're back, guys. I need a motion and a second for the closed session minutes of May 11, 2016.
Let's move. Second.
Councilperson E. Park.
Yes.
Abstain, please.
No, these are the -- yeah.
Twenty --
Twenty --
Seventeen, sorry. So, yeah, I abstained.
The first -- oh, the first.
Abstain.
I abstained. Yeah. Uh, councilperson Zaversa.
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro.
Recused.
M. Park.
Yes.
Wu.
As I was now the council, abstained.
Thank you. Closed session minutes of June 8, 2016. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Councilperson Zaversa.
Abstained. I was absent.
E. Park.
Abstained.
O.
Yes.
McMorro.
Yes.
M. Park.
Yes.
Wu.
Abstained.
Close session minutes of July 13, 2016. I need a motion.
Just a quick question. Can -- Councilor Wu, second, and that's a case.
I was just missed.
Yeah. Right. That's why I'm not moving. Yeah, that's why I'm not moving. Okay, let's do that.
You moved the motion and --
Right.
Sorry, didn't catch that.
Okay, so.
Good catch.
Twenty sixteen.
That's why I moved the ones we recused, but you didn't do anything.
Point of order, I have a question, too. Yes, sure. For Anne Marie. So, if we don't have enough votes to pass the minutes?
You need one. Just need one. Just need one.
You only need one vote to pass the minutes.
Okay.
So, I'm here.
So, the do-over is on?
On June 8, 2016. I have a motion by councilperson Wu.
No.
No.
I'm sorry. A motion.
Motion from Councilman Park. I can second that, even though I was absent, because I was --
Yeah, it is.
Because I --
Okay.
And I can.
All right, so.
Can you?
It's fine.
I don't --
He wasn't here, so how does he second that minute?
Yeah.
I would rather somebody else second.
Abstained.
Recused, recused. There's nobody left. Abstained. There's only one person.
It's fine. I only need one vote of approval. You can move it.
Okay.
You're a member of the council.
Someone's going to move it that's going to abstain. I would, in my opinion, it would be Councilman Zaversa only because he's been here.
Yes.
Councilman Wu.
Yes.
It was in a various situation because he was not here.
Okay, so.
I think it's over. I think that's fine.
Okay, so.
Start over.
All right, a motion for June 8, 2016, please.
Mr. Park?
I want to vote.
What was that?
Park, okay, and who's going to second it?
I'll second it. And those are the only two that can go.
Okay, let's vote again. Councilperson Zaversa.
Abstained.
E. Park.
Abstained.
O.
Recused.
McMorro.
Recused.
M. Park.
Yes.
Wu.
Abstained.
Close session minutes of July 13, 2016. I need a motion.
Just a quick question. Can -- Councilor Wu, second, and that's a case.
No, I just don't raise.
I was just missed.
Yeah, right. That's why I'm not moving.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I'm not moving. Okay, let's do that.
You moved the motion and --
Right.
Sorry, didn't catch that.
Okay, so.
Good catch.
Twenty sixteen.
So. That's why I moved the ones we recused, but you didn't do anything.
Point of order, I have a question, too. Yes, sure. For Anne Marie. So, if we don't have enough votes to pass the minutes?
You need one. Just need one. Just need one.
You only need one vote to pass the minutes.
Okay.
So, I'm here.
So, the do-over is on?
On June 8, 2016. I have a motion by councilperson Wu.
No.
No.
I'm sorry. A motion.
Motion from Councilman Park. I can second that, even though I was absent, because I was --
Yeah, it is.
Because I --
Okay.
And I can.
All right, so.
Can I?
Can you?
It's fine.
I don't --
He wasn't here, so how does he second that minute?
Yeah.
I would rather somebody else second.
Abstained.
Recused, recused. There's nobody left. Abstained. There's only one person.
It's fine. I only need one vote of approval. You can move it.
Okay.
You're a member of the council.
Someone's going to move it that's going to abstain. I would, in my opinion, it would be Councilman Zaversa only because he's been here.
Yes.
Councilman Wu.
Yes.
It was in a various situation because he was not here.
Okay, so.
I think it's over. I think that's fine.
Okay, so.
Start over.
All right, a motion for June 8, 2016, please.
Mr. Park?
I want to vote.
What was that?
Park, okay, and who's going to second it?
I'll second it. And those are the only two that can go.
Okay, let's vote again. Councilperson Zaversa.
Abstained.
E. Park.
Abstained.
O.
Recused.
McMorro.
Recused.
M. Park.
Yes.
Wu.
Abstained.
Thank you. July 13, 2016, closed session minutes. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Councilperson Zaversa.
Yes.
E. Park.
Abstained.
O.
Recused.
McMorro.
Yes.
M. Park.
Yes.
Wu.
Abstained.
October 13, 2016, closed session minutes. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Councilperson Zaversa.
Yes.
E. Park.
Abstained.
O.
Recused.
McMorro.
Yes.
M. Park.
Yes.
Wu.
Abstained.
October 13, 2016, closed session minutes. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Councilperson Zaversa.
Yes.
E. Park.
Abstained.
O.
Yes.
McMorro.
Yes.
M. Park.
Yes.
Wu.
Thank you.
And that is it.
Thank you, everyone.
The next item is correspondence.
Yes.
Board of them filed?
Yes. Please file the correspondence received from Eric Bernstein.
Okay. Next is payment of claims. And as a reminder.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I have it written here. Madam Clerk, we -- I have reviewed the claims and I want that they be paid with the exception, we're going to -- I'm going to pull check number 43763 and we will vote on that separately.
Okay.
Okay.
Make the motion.
I make a motion to pay the claims.
I need a second.
Resolution 17, 171.
I need a second for the payment of claims.
Second.
Councilperson Zaversa.
Yes.
E. Park.
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro.
Yes.
M. Park.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
Okay, separately?
Separately, I make a motion to pay check number 43763.
I need a second.
Second.
Question, what is that?
At the caucus, we discussed this. Councilman Zaversa has to recuse on that check, so we pulled it separately so that he doesn't vote on it, and then we just vote on that separately as a whole.
Okay, what is that claim?
Had to do with something with --
Ms. Eric Bernstein.
Eric Bernstein, he recused on.
They have available for a councilman to refuse on the bill.
I'm just trying to think if I have any complaints. I don't think so.
I didn't think so when I read the bill from anything that you were saying.
Okay. Councilperson Zaversa.
Recused.
E. Park.
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro.
Yes.
M. Park.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
Department head reports. Did everyone read them? No questions?
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open to the public. I need a motion to open to the public.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to come up and speak? Thank you. Please call up to the microphone, just state your name and address for the clerk.
Hi, everyone. My name is David Ambarzounian. I'm in the 32.
I'm sorry, can you just speak up a little louder so she can hear your name?
David Ambarzounian. I'm here in the 32. Dave, you have it.
Can you please spell your name for the record, sir? Your last name.
David A.M.B.A.R.T.S.U.N.I.A.N.
Thank you.
Me and my wife, we have a couple of concerns. Recreational centers. We -- Mr. Rashad Casey, he asked us if we would like to have our kids go and try to look around in class flow. We signed up. It was a very terrible service by the instructor. It was supposed to be eight weeks. It's only seven weeks, he disappeared. Then he contacted us again, which is 150 each child plus unit for $35. So, he contacted us again for the full classes. He said, "Okay," and paid him again. And this instructor disappeared. So, if you want to charge us, it's okay. I mean, it's for our children. It's the best investment we have. It's your kids. So, we would like to pay, or we would like to see the service.
Absolutely.
Terrible, very terrible. The guy doesn't show up and we don't know what's going on. Now, second thing, I'm going to -- okay. Public services, right? I think you guys are supposed to be hiring another additional 60,000 worth of people for the DPW.
DPW?
Yes.
That's on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, okay. I believe in the sand was top of this. It used to be only for the curbside, something growing out that said machines or giant machine or appliances.
Okay.
It took a couple hours to remove that from the curbside. Now, four days, five days, four, five time phone calls. So, what's going to happen hiring the 60,000 additional to this town? It's going to help us, then? We're not going to have that problem anymore? That's why you guys hiring this? I mean --
Well, first of all, I'm very sorry that you're going through that. I just, for my own edification, when that happened, did you just keep -- did you keep calling the borough?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. I did. My wife did, yes.
Okay.
And the response was, truck is broke down. 25 years I owned the transportation company. When your truck is broken down, you go rent and take care of the problem if you serve the same people.
Right, right.
So, now you're going to hire another 60,000. So, I'm assuming that's going to eliminate the problem?
Well, I'm going to ask the DPW Superintendent Mark Neville to directly respond to you because four or five days.
Yes, you did. I did. Only that day took five hours to remove that. That day after I spoke. Before that, it was five days. First time, it was two weeks ago, and four weeks ago, it was another four days. So. I don't know that, but -- I mean, I live there and I know that, and I don't want to see my guests coming in and if somebody passes through and looks that -- I'll put it out there. Once we thought that, we would have to pick it up.
Well, sir, I'm going to ask the Borough Administrator if you would be kind enough to look into what he's saying and then just get back to the resident.
And my last thing.
Sure.
My concern is.
Sure.
Last meeting we guys had, we're like six months, if I'm not mistaken.
Last meeting?
Last meeting, yeah.
Oh, every month we meet.
No, the last one, when I was --
Oh, and you were here. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I mentioned about the cars flying through our street.
Yes.
Then, right away, two, three days later, police officer was there, they put a sign and all that. If you look at the records here in this town, you're going to find out how many cars was crushed in that street. I guarantee you, in the three months, probably four cars been crushed there. And all my neighbors are. Why? Because of speed. I have a kid. I don't want to, God forbid, in a month or two or six, you guys say, you know what? Let's have asylum for, God forbid, some kids from that street. I don't.
Right.
Please do something about that. Protect our kids.
Right.
Right before the school season started this year, a couple of times, police officer police officer pulled couple of the, uh, drivers, and that's nobody there again. But they driving very fast over there. I don't know if, where you guys live, they driving forty-five, fifty miles? In our place, they do forty-five, fifty miles. I guarantee you, you put the police officer on the speeding radar over there, every second car goes over forty miles an hour, it's supposed to be twenty-five.
Um, I know that when I had met with the chief in the beginning of the year, when we went over capital items, we spoke about radar signs, and I know that Bayview was on the list as one of the streets. So Catherine, um, if you could follow up with the chief?
I'm, I'm wondering what's gonna happen after this LD woman, in my street? What's gonna happen at that time?
LG, who knows, actually, LG comes up.
I'm just wondering.
Well, obviously, um.
Obviously, we're gonna have problem with like, two thousand more cars, uh, traveling through this neighborhood, right? Uh, no?
Well, they shouldn't be speeding regardless, right? Okay, so, no matter how many cars you have come through. But, um, if you could.
More cars, more, uh, more accidents, more possibilities.
Right. Of course, yeah.
Please, can you guys do something about that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and bringing it to our attention. Thank you. Um, anyone else that would like to come up to the microphone and speak?
Quiet group today.
Um, seeing and hearing none, I have a motion to close to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this point, Madam Clerk, if you could start to read the resolutions?
Resolutions, one eighty. Authorize the purchase of fire equipment from New Jersey State Contract A eight zero nine six four. I need a motion in a second.
Can we just do them all, or?
I think we have to do each one separately, yeah. Okay, yeah. We're doing good time wise though. Okay. I'll move that.
I need a second?
Second.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo. One eighty-one. Award bid to Bataglia Associates LLC for accounting services. I need a.
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo. One eighty-two. Hire part-time employee Victor Galco. Motion?
Aye.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo. One eighty-three. Hire full-time DPW employee with CDL license, Nick Tarabocchia.
Aye.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo. One eighty-four. Hire full-time DPW employee with CDL, Richard Standish. Motion?
Aye.
Second. Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo. One eighty-five. Accept five K run donations. Motion?
Aye.
Second. You got it. Uh, councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo. One eighty-six. Authorize a dedication by rider for the donations from the five K. So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo. One eighty-seven. Authorizing settlement of tax appeal block seven eleven lot three.
Aye.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo. And we are adding two more ordinance, I'm sorry, resolutions, one eighty-eight and one eighty-nine.
Yes, uh, one eighty-eight is to appoint Marco Sangio to the Recreation Advisory Board for the unexpired term of Vivian Versari.
I need a motion?
Aye.
Second. Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo. One eighty-nine?
Appoint Lynn Wexler to the Recreation Advisory Board for the unexpired term of Beatrice Massius.
Aye.
Second. Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo. Is one of these in alternate?
No.
No alternates, okay. All resolutions have been read and they passed. Thank you.
Want me to read it? Madam Clerk, would you read the, uh, pub, the ordinance for the public hearing?
Public hearing on ordinance seventeen dash thirteen, an ordinance fixing salaries, wages, and compensation for all salaried, appointed, and elected officers within the Borough of Englebalklitz in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey. We need a motion to open to the public.
So move.
Second.
Would anyone from the public like to speak, um?
All in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Aye.
Seventeen thirteen.
Would anyone from the public like to speak on ordinance seventeen dash thirteen? Seeing and hearing none, uh, motion to close.
Aye.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we need a motion for, for the ordinance?
First reading, yeah.
No, to adopt the ordinance.
That's adoption, second.
Yeah. I need a motion?
Aye.
Second. Who was, who moved it?
Clark. I mean, Mark Clark, Councilwoman Clark.
And who's second?
I know.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo. Okay. Next one is ordinance for first reading, the public hearing will be November ninth. And just as a reminder to everyone, the next meeting will not be on a Wednesday, it's on a Thursday, November ninth. Seventeen fourteen, an ordinance amending and chang, and changing the payment of fees in regard to traffic control and workplace safety, Borough of Englebalklitz, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey. I need a motion?
Aye.
Second. Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo. Committee reports?
Uh, yes, if we can have committee reports, Councilman Zaversa?
Um, I just know, huh? Good here.
It's good. Councilwoman?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
So Board of Health, we had a flu clinic, um, where sixty-four residents showed up for their shots, um, twenty, uh, was paid, and the other, uh, goal for, I believe, was Medicare.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Uh, transportation, uh, so the, uh, the tech, uh, the taxi services to the, uh, local shop ride is running well, and, um, um, Mary and I had a discussion about, I'm sorry, Mary, you told me to mention your name, um, one of the residents asked if, um, uh, we could bring back, uh, the mall trips, at least like once a month, um.
Which kind of trips, I'm sorry, Councilwoman?
Mall, shopping mall.
Oh, mall, okay. Once a month?
So, resident just lost her husband and she doesn't drive, so.
Oh, okay. You're gonna look into that?
I'm gonna look, uh, look into it and, uh.
Report back at the next meeting? Okay, thank you very much. Um, okay, uh, committee reports for myself, the five K, um, was a great success, I think we had about two hundred, uh, people at the race. Um, it was a little humid that day, but it was, it was a, a big success, and I thank everybody that was there, that helped out, um, and that went really well. Uh, I wanted to report on the, the newsletter that, um, it's the first newsletter in a long time that the town has put out, it's called Englebalklitz Today. Um, I think that this is something that we can all be really proud of, I wanna thank Catherine, who was instrumental in, uh, getting this done, and getting all of the, um, reports to, to me, from the different departments, and, uh, so that it was available for the, the layout. I would also like to report, I, I attended, um, one of the senior meetings last night, and Mrs. O'Shea reported to me that she already got three calls from this newsletter, from residents that wanted to join. So, that's exciting, so that means that people are reading it, they're, they're, they, they're happy about this type of information, and I think, if we can do this semi-annually, that would be our goal, um, it's a really good thing for the residents. I encourage all the council people, if they have any types of ideas for the next round, uh, for the newsletter, to please send them to Catherine and I, and the mayor, and, um, you know, we could keep just giving different, different information. And on the back, I thought it was good that we, you know, all of our names are there, and, um, so that the residents, if they wanna reach us, they know how to, who we are, how to find us, and, you know, and get their, uh, you know, get to us. But, um, Catherine, I would like you to give, if you can, just give a quick overview of, of the bench program, the Hudson Terrace Land, if you can, and the welcome sign program. Um, I would really appreciate that.
Well, as you know, the bench program is something that the mayor wished to run, um, which we did do successfully, we did fundraising for the purchases of the benches, the plaques, and the installation. Um, DPW has been graded, strolling them, mounting them on concrete foundations, um, three bench sites, or benches have been installed already, um, we're hoping for written cutting before the snowfall. Um, so the bench program is still very active, if anybody's interested in a bench, or dedicate a bench throughout the area of town, we're trying to have like a walking park type thing around town, so residents can be more pedestrian as opposed to driving some people around. Um, so it's going very well. Um, the Hudson Terrace Landscape Program is because of the lovely site that we do have along Hudson Terrace that nobody wants to be responsible for, and ultimately, we're not responsible.
Right.
So, um, I thought that if we can get landscapers to adopt, sort of like the adopt the roadway type thing, um, to maintain that area for us, because it takes all of our GPW manpower, the limited amount of GPW manpower we currently have, to clean up county and state property, and it's just, commuters don't pick sides. I mean, we've put out no litter signs to try to guilt people, and clearly, that hasn't worked. Um, so we're looking for landscapers to sponsor sections of the, the roadway, and, um, we would allow them to do, uh, very small advertising on the roadway, and therefore, we would set the criteria from sign and height, uh, and size, and this would be an annual renewal for them. So in other words, if they don't continuously maintain it, their, their sign dedication comes down. So, that was what we thought was the best way to maintain Hudson Terrace, had no cost to us, and we could appreciate it more.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we can even expand some of the bench programs. Um, the next program was the welcome signs to Englebalklitz, um, we have some of the very stark skate signs in our areas that, you know, just say Englebalklitz, I think we're a little bit more of a huge community, to have the better looking signs, we can even have those sponsored by corporations, uh, in order to pay for them, we haven't designed them yet, but anybody interested in sponsoring a sign, most certainly, can contact the administration, and we're gonna kick off that hopefully in the spring, but preferably have sponsors win more, um, the, for, for sign and size.
Thank you so much, Catherine, thank you for all the work you've been doing on this. Um, does anybody have any other questions?
Can, uh, can I make a suggestion?
Sure, of course.
For the next newsletter, uh, before you go to print, um, I, you know, requested for a, uh, proposed draft, and, um, you know, I didn't get one, and, um, you know, there, I think you left out Board of Health for, uh, not Councilman, Woman Park, so, um, the point that I'm trying to make is, you know, did you, in the lighting?
There's nothing on it, I wasn't.
Yeah, so, the point that I'm trying to make is, um, you know, like, if you have more sex advice looking at the draft, you know, maybe we could catch some mistakes and make it better.
I will, yeah, thank you very much, and first of all, the, we, if we wanna have drafts, then we have to meet, and then we may have to call a meeting. So, I hear what you're saying, you can't, you, because if you're giving feedback on it, it, it has, it's done through the committee forum, right? So, you can't send it to all the council and then have conversations on it, we're not meeting, but if you wanna have a meeting about it, if that's what you're saying, then that's what it has to be, but, um, usually, as all the other committees work, it's committee work form, and, um.
So who was under committee then?
The mayor, the mayor at the meeting, and I know you were here, because he, uh.
The mayor was on the newsletter committee?
No, he was not. The mayor appointed myself and Catherine to work on this, and I reached out to Councilman Wu, who was the only person on the communications committee besides the other residents, so.
Can I ask Councilman Wu if he had received the draft of the newsletter before I went to print?
Carol did send it, did show me a copy of it before I was printing, did need it.
And I wanna be clear, as I stated for the record, all that I did was do the layout. I did not, Catherine provided all, other than the mayor's letter, um, who did, the mayor did it on his own, the, the back page came straight off the, um, Borough's website, five K sponsorship pages, we, we all know where that came from, the recreation stuff is all stuff that we've read before, so, um, you know. I hope that that answers your question, Councilwoman.
I can really answer it.
No, I mean, I, I've asked for a draft, and can you figure, I got an email saying that it's already, you know, printed, and you get one copy in your mailbox, that's not the answer that I was, you know, expecting.
I, I, you know, I didn't hear you say that you thought the newsletter came out nice and that, that it was a great job. I didn't hear you say anything positive about this newsletter.
No, I did.
Okay, so, you know what, you're, I hear you, and, uh, I explained why, uh, a draft was not emailed, and when you did e, when you emailed me, Councilwoman, if I may, please, when you emailed me, it was already done.
Well, I talked about, to, to the Borough Administrator, Catherine, did, uh, the Councilwoman know if I gave you any connection on the newsletter?
Why is that relevant? I, I'm asking whether, um, you know, my request for a proposed draft, why wasn't it provided to me? That's the question, that, we're not talking about what you're asking.
You didn't have, you didn't have anything to contribute for, right?
Well, you didn't really ask me, Mayor, and even if I volunteer, maybe, you know, um.
But you knew the project was going on, you didn't contribute.
I, I wanted to see a draft.
Perfect.
I wanted to see a draft.
All right. Okay, um, the only thing.
So much for that's pants, Steve.
Oh, please.
Yeah, we may have to see it.
Well, thank you, I got it in the mail.
Listen, this is something we all, as the council, should be proud of, and I would appreciate the positive comments, I really don't think that there's anything negative about this newsletter, at all.
I wanted to put together the, uh.
I mean, this was a.
This is just constructive criticism, perhaps next time you do the newsletter, you actually ask all the informants.
I just, I'm gonna thank the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share a lot of her picture.
You know, whether there's something to add or not, that, I think that's.
I understand that, we're, we're specifically, I understand, but we, you all knew about it, you knew about it.
I didn't say anything negative about your newsletter, I'm just making a suggestion to make it better for next time, so.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful.
You know, you could've, you could've told me in your email that, um.
It was done already, Gloria, when you emailed me.
No, I know, but you didn't, you didn't answer me for ten minutes.
This is, this is silly, it was done already, and you had two months to email me your ideas, and you didn't. So, please, this is, you know, it's, it's just not fair. Um, okay.
Well, we agree on that, it's definitely not fair, I agree.
Okay, um, I just wanna bring to everybody's attention that also, if they could support the Lions Club's recycle for site program, um, that's, there's a lot of people in need of, uh, that would be helped by that program, and also, um, our trunk or treat is October twenty-ninth, um, and I know that Catherine's been working with the Recreation Director and with the Assistant Director to, uh, have some additional surprises for the trunk or treat, and I thank you for that, Catherine as well. Um, that's all I have on my committee report, Councilman Park?
Okay, uh, we're standing by. Uh, chickens approaching, but they're just saying one of me, unfortunately, I cannot , uh, because they're too bad to reach here, so, uh, they don't have any more business.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Councilman Wu?
Uh, first and foremost, at least, just wanna congratulate, uh, our five officers attending to the two-year-old club, Marion County Dinner, and five of our officers were, uh, awarded, uh, the Meritorious Service Award for their courage and bravery, and, um, it was, uh, fantastic to see them up on the stage, and, uh, I just wanna congratulate each and every one of them, Lieutenant David Hill, Sergeant Colin Ford, and Patrolman Sal Janus, Patrolman O'Shea, and Patrolman Manetti. Um, as regards DPW, as it says on the agenda, we're hiring two new full climbers, uh, and we're hiring one part-timer, that's to replace the two retired folks, um, Steve and Wolf, um, who, you know, uh, did their service for the town for many years. Just wanted to thank, um, Mark Neville and Catherine for taking so much time to, uh, make sure that we had three very solid candidates in the final round, uh, came in at the very end, and, um, all three candidates were terrific, and I think, you know, a lot of the issues with the town were shorthanded, um, and, um, I'm sure the, the team now will be bolstered and will be able to take care of any other DPW issues. Uh, nothing to report on the board.
Um, do you wanna add the recycle date?
Recycle date.
It's on October twenty-first.
So we recycle best, uh, to the official date of October twenty-first, um, Mark, what's the time?
Nine to one.
Nine to one, five to one. Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Mark. Um, yes, and I, I, I thank you for, uh, mentioning the awards the police, uh, received, you and I did, uh.
Yeah, we, uh, we, 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 we started with the Callstat Volunteer Annuals Club, they were the ones that, um, that plane that crashed over in, uh, Road Ferry, um, Callstat, um, they, they were all the first responders on the scene at that time, so it was very nice to sit with them and have them share their, their story that day.
And everyone thought that we were part of the volunteer, uh, that night.
I don't care about that.
They were congratulating us all night long.
Yeah, it was, it was a fun night overall.
Yes, it was very nice, and congratulations to all the offices. Um, okay, do we, under new business, we're done, because we, well, other than the Recreation Advisory Board appointments, there's nothing else for new business on here. The old business, I'm gonna do next, yeah. Um, old business, we have the response from, uh, Major, at the last meeting, Councilwoman Park had asked me to send over some paperwork to Major, um.
I didn't ask you to do that, I just, I just gave you some papers regarding temporary life, and you said you were looking into it.
Well, no, I think I did say it to me, though, I was gonna give it to the engineer.
I, I, I'm here.
Anyway, so we gave it to, um, to the engineer, and he only got it back, um, today, and, um, I think the letter's pretty self-explanatory, we can talk about it if you want, um, he cites, um, safety issues for not being able to do, you know, I appreciate your thought, but, and I, I, I did read through this quickly, uh, after, um, we got this, but on here, it does say, even, even in your own papers, Councilwoman, that the, um, it says that it's for, um, to make your job site productivity, maximize your job site, they're definitely for commercial job sites, they're not for.
I think they're different, um, models, I think that particular one might be for that, but I believe they have different models, but in any event, I mean, I just got this today, literally, like, two hours ago.
Right.
So I do have some questions.
Absolutely, right, but I think the big, the big thing, I mean, he's pretty clear.
The point of the report is saying safety is a big issue.
Safety's a really big issue.
I understand that, um, but.
Northern Highlands have them for fifteen years, forty-one.
Listen, there's a lot of things that people do that, that are not safe, it doesn't mean that you should do it, so, you know.
Right, I just.
So I just wanna say that, you know.
Right, right, so I just would like some time to maybe reach out to Andy, ask him some questions.
Without a doubt, absolutely.
Um, and also, you know, at the community night out, we did have a softball game, uh, by the Little League, uh, coaches, they all played under the portable lights, so.
Yes, but, I will tell you, Councilwoman.
And if there was a safety concern, they should've been out there, right? So, I mean, I'm, I'm not.
Well, they weren't playing in the dark, they were playing in the light, so, let's be clear.
Right, because we had portable lights.
No, no, no.
But, but in any event, I, I would like a second opinion, I would look into it, I'm gonna ask some questions.
Absolutely.
If it's, you know, of course, it's safety first, so.
Of course.
If that's a problem, then we think, you know, just, um, move on, but, yeah.
No, I just, you know, you asked me to get this done for you, I did, and I just want to make sure I got it done, okay, and feel free to.
Well, look, there was, there was a whole host of issues, including running gas power[1607.33]
Well, look, there was a whole host of issues, including running gas-powered generators.
Tell them we can't hear you. You have to speak louder. Mayor, we can't hear you. If you could speak louder.
There was a whole host of issues, including the safety. But there's also the running of generators by gas-powered engine. Um, it's going to be a little community, um, does not work. Having the fuelled generators, having to stabilize the lights that's fallen over, uh, it's just not going to work. So, I suggest that we, uh, we pick up the plans up. We already, we wanted to do, I wanted to do, light up the field, start most of it where we need to play, put a van shell in some pavilions, and make Angel Cliffs a showcase town, um, and not, uh, be the laborable community in that market. And, uh, for the record, what do you want to know? For what, for what, Ellen Park?
That for artificial turf. I don't want artificial turf. I'm on the record again, I do not want artificial turf. I never said no to the lights. You made it a package deal where I had to vote, you know, all or nothing with the artificial turf and lights. You never said artificial turf or lights to be on the record. So, you know, I, I brought this up perhaps thinking it was a good way to kind of ease the surrounding residents of the park to say, you know what, having lights maybe is not such a bad idea. Um, and because it was portable, you know, we could test them out was what I was thinking. But, you know, uh, if it doesn't work out, like I said, if you said, you know, if it's a safety issue, like I said, safety first. But I think it's a little premature to say anything, only because, again, I just got this report two hours ago.
Actually, it's clearly a bad idea because it has steam, noise, and unstable light structure that's not reaching high enough to type things. All right?
Yeah, how do you know that? You're not...
None of that's accurate, Ms. None of that is accurate. Many towns play with portable lighting and for years, and it's not an issue. So, I think we just need to stop, stop the nonsense and either look into it and at the end, do a little more investigating as to whether it is feasible or not. But there are several different portable light options, and this is just one that they responded to. So, I don't have a problem with listening to the engineer and listening, but it got just two hours ago, and I think it's worth discussing, that's all.
Listen, okay, if I...
If I get it, I'm not going to change up the reading.
If I...
That's you. You head out of the sand, and you'll be fine.
I know, okay, let's, let's stop being disrespectful.
I have an idea. Engineer reports are inside with actual...
All right, we were doing very well on the meeting, so let's just make sure we stay that way. Um, every councilperson has the right to their opinion. We don't agree with you on this. That doesn't mean that that stuff, you can still call the engineer and do whatever you want.
I'm sorry, excuse me. You should direct your queries to the borough administrator, and she will communicate or put you in communication with the engineer, okay?
That's fine, thanks.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's the second time. I want to make it clear. Queries go through the administrator.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, just, just, if I could just piggyback on this, um, temporary light situation. It's, it's not just the, um, I understand there's different types of lights, but all of these lights run off of gas, and they run off the generators, and the generators make noise, and the residents, if you think they have problems with the, with having lights, to have generators running all the time, and then the smell of gas, and then if they have asthma, then they have different issues, this opens up a real different can of worms. And just because Councilwoman Versa, other towns do something that isn't proper, that just doesn't mean that we should follow suit.
I agree.
Uh, no, I'm not saying that, and don't put words in my mouth.
I'm not, I'm just saying, let's, it's a good example.
Okay, so please, listen, we need to, this is, okay, please, that's not what I was saying? Okay, I'm talking about these lights. That's all, that's what I'm talking about. Everything happened, the vote happened, you guys took your position, and that's it.
So, let's move on. We'll discuss later, and get more information from the borough administration, so I'm fine with that.
Okay. Um, okay, most of the close.
No, more old business, I have...
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, there's nothing on the agenda that you have old business.
Yes, I have old business. That's why it's on the agenda, old business, that's what we're discussing right now.
Oh, okay. And, well, I don't have anything written on my agenda for old business, do you? I do.
Yeah, me too. We bring it up, it's old business.
Okay, I'm sorry. Then, what is...
So, my old business is, um, last meeting, we had lovely friend, Ms. Eastwood bringing up some charges against myself about a build, uh, my home that I built, and that I didn't follow proper, filed proper permits, et cetera, et cetera, which I told it was all nonsense, which it was. And we have a letter from the, um, building inspector that says everything was done properly, and all permits were filed properly, so it's okay. I accept your apology. It's, you know, not necessary to open your, not, I, I do accept it. I'm perfectly fine.
Councilman, Councilman, please, tell me, address anybody in the audience.
As I say, every person, every person should be held to the same standard, which I was and deemed I was, and that's all I have to say about it. Thank you very much, and I accept your apology, sir.
Councilman. He's not, he's not to address anybody in the audience.
I'm not. I just said I accept your apology. I didn't say anyone...
The member of the public is speaking out of order.
Okay.
I, I understand, and we're done, right?
Correct.
The matter is still under review, and the final review will be presented probably at the November meeting.
I appreciate it.
The matter is still under review by whom?
Me.
Okay, and who authorized you to review?
Uh, I'm the borough attorney, and there are legal issues raised.
We pay you, and so you have to have authority from the council. This is borough form of government.
Yes.
Right? So, who authorized you to go and still investigate when the zoning officer of our town both sent us a finding, said there was nothing that we didn't?
Yes, I understand. There are other legal issues raised by the citizen query, and both the borough and the homeowners have a right...
You're not answering my question, Henry.
Excuse me, I authorized myself.
Let her finish.
As the borough...
You authorized yourself.
Please, please let me explain. As the borough attorney, when legal matters come to my attention, I do not ignore them. I discussed it with the borough administrator. The borough administrator said, well, in the meeting, we deferred it to the department head. I said respectfully, there are legal issues. We need a clean decision on all of them.
I'm an attorney. What legal issues are we talking about?
I am not going to speak about this matter in public. I have reviewed the files and agreed...
Okay, you can email me tomorrow about the legal issues, but aside from that, I...
Okay, I am not going, excuse me, I'm not going to email you. You have the letters of Eastwood, do you not?
And I have a letter from Nick Melphy, which I will review. I will read to the public.
Okay, you don't need to...
Upon my review of the...
Councilwoman, Councilwoman, you are interrupting the attorney. You've...
You asked me a question.
You shouldn't answer it.
Okay, so, I did answer it, and let me finish. There are legal issues raised that the borough has an obligation to put to rest one way or another. They are not just technical issues raised by looking at the plans. I will be issuing an official report that will go along with the Nick Melphy decisions and will be public operable documents. I need time to do that. I reviewed the files today.
Okay, but again, who authorized you to do those?
I am authorized on, as a borough attorney, for the responsibility of the legal matters of the borough to not have tunnel vision. I need to be able to properly represent the borough.
There's litigation.
I addressed, I looked, I looked at the matters that Mr. Melphy looked at, and I said, fine, but he does not go far enough to address the legal issues, in most particular with respect to a pre-existing non-conforming condition and whether it was expanded or not.
Right, and what's, in any of it?
But I understand, there is a legal issue there.
Okay.
There is another legal issue.
But then I'm, I'm going to ask the borough administrator to pull the bills until we know for a fact who allowed you to now bill the borough more money regarding my house when I have a letter from the zoning officer, right, clearing me, severance.
I'm sorry, but if you...
The director, Councilwoman Park, is correct. I'm happy to have him, he's wonderful. So, um, you have to take a vote, you do that.
Okay, so let's take a vote. Why should we pay you, Henry, to, to, to...
I'm sorry.
To make an investigation of my house when there's a clearance? All right, if there's a clearance, why is the zoning officer...
You have a conflict of interest in speaking about your own personal matter. You cannot vote on anything about your own personal matter.
So, I will, you know what, I will abstain or recuse myself. Let's take a vote right here.
I don't need authority. I do not need your authority. I am the officially appointed borough attorney. There is a statute that governs my actions. There is a code provision that governs my actions. And in addition, I hold a license to practice law, which I must do thoughtfully and carefully and without regard to the consequences that may come to my own personal attack by you, okay?
Okay.
And excuse me, I know you're an attorney. It is not proper to go willy-nilly accusing lawyers of having conflicts of interest or anything else like that without having a basis. I am doing my duty as the borough attorney. It is an appropriate exercise of authority. I do not need borough council approval to do every single matter that I am responsible for. This is meant, this is a general borough matter that I am ultimately responsible for in a legal manner. I'm sorry, I do not need council approval for everything that I do.
Exactly, I disagree.
And by the way, I didn't bill for it.
Oh, well, you didn't say that before.
Well, she just raised a billing issue. I haven't billed because I didn't do anything on it until today.
Right, today, so you're meeting today...
Yeah.
With the zoning officer...
Yes.
And the borough administrator.
Yes.
You're not going to bill for that.
Oh, yes, I am going to bill for that.
Right, so then who authorized it?
Right, I am.
You knew that.
Because I, li, listen, sue me.
This is borough form of government.
Sue me.
Let me sue you. We'll take, you know what, let's take a vote right here.
Point of order, point of order, if you want to be recog, point of order. If you want to be recognized, just say, may I be recognized? Screaming back and forth, not...
All right, I'm sorry I'm raising my voice. The one last point I will just say is both the borough and the property owners should want a thorough, complete, and final decision to be rendered on their property, which will, which will affect their property and any future owners in the property. Because this doesn't need to be raised in five years from now if we deal with it right now. That's the way it should be. And by the way, we have another very similar matter from another public citizen in this borough who has the very same issue that you have, and I'm also reviewing that. So, I mean, these things come up. Almost every week, there's something like this.
I had, uh, Councilwoman Park, are you admitted to graduate to New Jersey?
I am not.
Okay, so you're not an attorney for your city right now?
No, she's, she is an attorney. She's a licensed attorney.
No.
I am a licensed attorney.
She can't graduate to New Jersey, that's all it means.
Can't graduate to New Jersey.
Right.
What does that have to do with the fact that we have a determination from the zoning officer, and still you are investigating me and charging the borough money for, you know, a determination that was already made?
I think she, I think she explained her reasons for that, Councilwoman, and...
I have an obligation, and you...
Why don't you just read the letter?
Yeah, I'm going to read my letter. Don't worry. I, I'm in a legal letter that the zoning officer, uh, passed out to everyone here. Upon my review of the above address, my findings are that if the applicant was brought into my office today, I would treat it the same way that was for my predecessor. I don't see any reason for any variances that needed to be applied for. The applicant meets all the current requirements set forth in the bulk schedule as in thirty dash eleven dash three ordinance, right, number nine three oh six. Therefore, no variances would be required. It also appears that there were no trees which were of concern of the property that were being touched except that I had the proper permit, right? So, that's what was sent out to everyone, and yet the investigation continues. So, and...
The legal review continues.
And you say that.
It's not an investigation.
Point of order.
Can you turn your mic on? I just, come on.
So, I, because I, I am not, it's not the same letter, but similar. And just, and there is, I understand there's a process to be done, and I, I appreciate that, Henry.
Thanks.
I welcome that because I trust our, um, zoning official, and I believe, you know, you should investigate it thoroughly and see what else is there, but I, obviously, there's not much there, but that's what you should do. So, I appreciate that, and I, I...
Thank you, Councilwoman Versa.
But I, I would like a chance just to read, and this, maybe this will shed a little light on Henry's position too, so everybody here understands why she's, um, doing her due diligence, as I see it. This is how I see it. So, in regard with the address involved, which is twenty-four Karen Lane, I want to first state that the review process and inspections are done solely by the borough of Alphard. Any investigation that is to be done should be done by them because they went from start to finish with this project, not by our office. I don't understand why this is an issue now almost two years later. This should have been brought up at that time. The approval process started back in December of 2013, in which a letter from DDP and Burton County Soil Permit was issued. On February 27th, 2014, the building permits were also issued. In September of 2015, files from Burton County Soil were received along with a letter from the Angel Cliffs Environmental Shade Tree for a final within as-built survey. Final inspections were done on February 27th, 2014, in which a CEO was marked off on the, um, permit application. In closing, I believe this case should be closed as all permits and inspections were done by another party and seem to be in good standing. This concludes my report. That's our construction official and zoning officer. So, um, that, that's why, Henry, I put faith in, in, in all of the process, and I'm okay with it. So, you know, if I can help you in any way, um...
And I certainly would.
Welcome to it.
I have a question, Jen.
Yeah, well, just let me, just let me just, and let me say this. I just did this review today. If I have any question, I would certainly think that I could pick up the phone and speak to either you or to Councilwoman Park to answer any factual question that I have.
Anything I can help you with, I'll try.
The legal analysis, the legal analysis is the legal analysis. I am looking to do what is proper to address the concerns raised from the borough's perspective and from the homeowner's perspective. I want to assure that I am not making a decision based upon anything other than what's proper under the law.
And I understand, right, there is a process. I understand that part, but let's just be very transparent. The complaint I was made by Ms. Eastwood, who is the mayor's representative on the planning board currently, and she is also the chairperson of the Shade Tree Committee, she is the one, the resident that was on the agenda that brought this complaint about, okay? It has also come to my attention that she's been mailing these letters to, to certain residents in town who would apply for variances and, and basically putting me in a very bad light. So, you know, it, let's call it what it is, right? And, and that should be also noted in the agenda, that she is a, uh, appointed representative by the mayor who is now bringing this complaint against me, and she's using her position on the planning board, right, by mailing these out to people applying for variances. So, that in itself is...
Well, that's, that's, that, that, that's presumptuous on your behalf to make that statement.
Why, I have letters.
If you're, hold on, hold on.
Let's look into that, while she's going to pull the investigation.
Yeah, well, all right.
Hold on, no, excuse me, excuse me. I was speaking. The guys are just screaming back and forth between them. Please, yes, you are, please, okay. If you, Councilwoman, you're entitled to have your opinion.
It's not my opinion. I can bring those residents here tonight to speak if that's the case.
But it's, right now, you're stating it as a fact.
It is a fact. I have le, copies of letters that she sent out.
I'm not, okay, right, just, you're entitled to your opinion, and I'm just reminding you to just state it as an opinion.
That's going to be part of the investigation.
Yes, can you investigate to that as well?
As part of your investigation, I think that would be...
May, may I, may I look at that? So, I look at this, and you've heard me say, a citizen query, okay? I'm not taking a position on who wrote it or what the motivations are. However, when you also indicate that the, the position of the particular citizen on the planning board is being used in some particular malfeasance...
Right.
Then I really hesitate because she would have no ability to write, I'm, I'm a mayor's designee on the planning board, and I'm writing you this letter. That should not occur. I'm only giving you a surface without having seen anything. I don't know that it's proper for me to review it, but I would suggest if you or Councilwoman Versa wants that being addressed, please bring it to Catherine, and I'm sure she will distribute it to me. And if there is some type of misuse or something unusual, it will need to be sent to the planning board to review, and our borough code of ethics will need to be looked at. We do have a borough code of ethics, too, and I have read through it recently, and it would behoove everyone who has any kind of official position to be cognizant of that. Uh, and, you know, we do need to act in a careful manner. That's all that I say.
And that applies to all of us. I'm going to remind all of you that this applies to all of us.
And, and, and I, I understand about the borough attorney limitations. I often will ask you, appoint me to affordable housing because of the litigation. These kinds of in-house matters do generally come across my desk at some point, preferably sooner rather than later. But they do come, and I often bring them back to the council as well.
I'm, I'm okay with that, Henry.
All right? I think that we should have, you should, you guys should have a discussion with Catherine. Sorry, Catherine, but you're the administrator, and if there's something that needs to be done, let me know. Until I have paper, I can't do that.
Okay. Point of order.
Okay.
And Councilwoman Park, and I wasn't going to bring this up, but I will bring it up right now. As I said, you can have an opinion, but you stated that she is using her office. Okay, you're stating that. You have no proof that she is...
I do have proof.
Okay, Councilwoman, I'm asking you, please.
You keep saying, I don't have proof, but I do have proof.
You're, you're stating that she's using her office. Listen to my words. You have proof of that?
Yes.
Okay, give it to the borough of Inverness.
I'm actually sending it to, uh, DLGS.
Okay, okay. I just want to remind you that...
We'll take it there, okay?
But you're sending very nasty emails at yourself about the mayor and myself with some pretty nasty lies in them.
Okay.
Okay, so let's, please, please, excuse me, this was, excuse me, well, your friends...
If they shared it with other people...